Lots from two existing lots where the SPL section block lot numbers of the two existing lots are listed. Where is the proposed lots comply with the minimum lot size and dimension? Subject to road maintenance agreement being filed with the town. And we're asked for 161.9 of the proposed action as a minor subdivision subject to approval by the planning board. And completed application for subdivision approval was prepared by Johnson Route 28 LLC. Signed by Paul Hakem dated 2013.1. There's this other listed set of items that make for the complete application. Including the consign consent or form, the signed escrow and the environmental assessment form. As the proposed action includes, oh, I'm sorry. Whereas referral of the county planning board was not required. Proposed action involves fewer than five lots. And access roads and structures are not situated in a hundred year floodplain. Assistant with Ulster County County Planning Board Land Use Referral Guide. Whereas the planning board considered the application materials submitted by the applicant for the action. Along with comments from consultants may be a memorandum. Whereas in accordance with chapter 161.9 of the proposed actions of minor subdivision. It must hold one public hearing before it can take final action. But can waive their requirement for a preliminary public hearing. Whereas at April 13th, meeting of the planning board, the schedule of such hearing at the, for the May 21st. We're hearing today. Whereas it's eight, May 18th, 21th meeting. Planning board opened the public hearing and thereafter closed the public hearing. Whereas the planning board classified a proposed action as unlisted. And upon review of the entire record issued, a seeker negative declaration. With this resolution after concluding that the action did not pose any significant or large adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board has determined that they have complied fully with the requirements seeker. If it further resolve, the planning board hereby grants to, I'm sorry, should say three lot. Minor subdivision approval described. Subject to plat being filed with the office of the county clerk after signed by the chairman. Filing of a road maintenance agreement with the town in a draft, I guess Jason, I should add after review by the town attorney. You got that Gabby? Three changes, erasures, modifications or revisions will be made to any plat after approval. By the planning board endorsed in writing on the plat. And the final plat must be filed in the office of the county clerk within 62 days of approval. And finally, all fees, including consultant, consultant fees shall be paid.
Thank you, David. Is, do we have a motion from the board to either accept or reject? The minor subdivision?
I'm sure I'll make that motion.
To?
I'll second that.
Hang on, what are we, what are we accepting the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to accept the resolution has been made by Frank and seconded by Anna.
Correct.
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Ms. Heiner?
Sorry, I'm having a season fit. Yes.
It's okay. Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabopolis?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay, Paul, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Hey, Paul, we'll, we'll get to your Pioneer Solar in just a minute, so.
Okay, I will not be on for that. Zach and the other guys will be on that are leading the project, but thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Enjoy your time.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay.
Enjoy. Paul, thank you.
Chairman, it's Dave. For Gabby, I'll get you the cleaned up version Gabby tomorrow, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would like to open up the public hearing for the Bible Baptist Church. This is a minor subdivision where the church is. Looking to break off a small parcel of land and sell it to an individual. So I'd like to have Pastor Al just describe the project, please.
Yeah. Good evening, board members. As Jeffrey said, it's a minor subdivision. We're taking four, approximately four acres and making it 1.003 acres. And this property is on the backside of our church. The church is bordered by Main Street and Main Street Extension. And the piece of property we're talking about is off of Ruby Meadows Road. So Ruby's Meadow Road snakes around behind the property and there is access to the property there. And we're currently in contract with the Niles family, okay? We've accepted their binder and on the back of that property, there is access off of Ruby Meadows to the property between two houses, okay? One of them is Mrs. Mertens and the Ganges family. And at this time, there's no plan to, plan to build a house there necessarily, okay? The Niles family are simply purchasing the property for a future, future investment. There may be a house in the future, but I, but I don't know that that's not two, three years down the road. I have had some discussion with them in preparation for the meeting, but nothing is pending immediately. So what I picture is, is when we sell this land to the Niles family. Off of Ruby Meadows, we have a driveway which will simply go between the Mertens' house and the Ganges' house, okay? It's on the side and where that driveway will go, I, you know, specifically, I don't know, but there's a big expanse of property up there. And it will certainly conform with whatever requirements are to, to build, okay? And as it relates to a house in the future, I can't speak for the Niles family other than to say that they'll put in a building application. And they will fulfill whatever duties and requirements are required to, to, to put up a house if they so deem to do so. Very similar to how the churches can conform to whatever the process has been to get to this point here, even at the meeting here. So a simple subdivision, approximately an acre of land between two houses. And that's pretty much the project. There we go. Thank you.
Can I just have a second to open the public hearing?
I'll second that, Gabby.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Again. Okay. All right, so I, I know there's a number of the neighbors here who would like to speak. What I'd like to do is open this up for public comment to the floor. And I'd like you to state your name and your address. And we're going to limit the comments to three minutes, so you'll have three minutes and then we'll move on to the next person. I, I muted many of you, so if you want to speak, you may need to unmute yourself. So let's, let's begin if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Hello? Yes?
Hi, Anna and Sal Ganges. And we're at 16 Ruby Meadows Road. We are between the property there. That's. My concern is, and I had written a letter already to the town. Is that my house sits lower and when I bought my house originally, there's been grading issues. I sit at the bottom of two, between two hills. So when I purchased my home 13 years ago, like I said, I've never been to a board meeting and I've had a problem. But I don't want to fire a problem. I sit at the bottom of a hill. I had to get grading done on my property because there's a lot of water that goes towards the house. Being the Niles on the one side and.
The church.
The church, this church property on the other side. My concern is that I don't want to have a water issue if there's a home there, built there. Very concerned about that and having more water problems. And if I do inquire problems in the future, if there is a home to be built there or whatever, who's going to take care of that? I want to be, I want to be recognized now. So, you know, I just don't want to have any water issues. Cause I have to keep a dehumidifier on 24 hours, a commercial dehumidifier because of this problem. Okay, and also if there is a home built there, you know, if you look at the set, I, I don't understand the diagram. Like the flag just went up about the separation there just went up like about six weeks ago. Right, you know, as we showed the property lines or whatever. But my concern is that privacy also, I mean, I sit at the bottom of the hill. You know, there won't be, and no privacy. Is it going to be a home behind my home? Is it going to be another Barclay Heights? I just, I, my concern is that. You know what I'm saying?
And you're lot number eight in this boat, in this upper left picture, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You can see the back of my house in the photos. I had submitted photos and I submitted, you know, where I had work done, grading done. You know, they know, the Niles know, they saw tractors on my house and excavators and everything else 13 years ago. Again, I, it was all, the basement was all full of water. I just don't want to have a problem. You know, I bought my house 13 years ago and I don't want to issue more, inquire more bills because of it. And the road, I want, I don't know how, like if they can explain how they're going to do this road. Is it going to be right along the hill? I don't know. I don't have any, you know, understanding of how the house is going to be built. Or whatever the plans. Like I said, the dead end road is, I have my grandchildren here. I just, like I said, I bought the property because it was privacy spacious homes, you know?
Okay. We've, we've noted in the minutes, your, your concerns and I appreciate you, you speaking.
Thank you.
Are there other neighbors or anyone from the public that would like to speak?
My name is Lenny. 23 Ruby Meadows Road. We've been here for 30 years. We are original owners here. And at the time of purchase 30 years ago. My blueprints, which I have in front of me, the original blueprints, it was relayed to us that there was a possibility that this easement could take place at any time in the future. And if we had a problem with that, and at that time, we had said to the builder and to the town that we had no problem with that. I am directly across the street from where this would be running. And as of today, I still do not have a problem with that. I understand that there may be some other issues there. The driveway would be coming out between those two homes and really coming right towards mine until they turn up Ruby Meadows Road. Or come down Ruby Meadows Road away from my house. And I don't see any problem with that whatsoever. I think it would be a benefit for the community.
And Lenny, are you lot number six in this upper photograph here that borders the throughway?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman Ring. Can we just verify, is Shelley lot seven or eight? Because one thing says she's lot seven. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just want to make sure I got my wits about me.
Yeah, yep, no, I'm seven. So I guess I just have a couple comments, thoughts.
And this is, this is Shelley speaking?
Yes, it is. Shelley Mertens, lot seven.
That's, okay.
Okay, my questions were most of the time, when, when something gets subdivided, there's always a potential for building a house. The Niles could buy it today, sell it tomorrow and the house would be up in six months. So.
A different code she gave me.
Yeah, Shelley, continue, please.
Um, so I guess what my, my question is, most townships that I've dealt with in the past always had to show that a lot was buildable. Cause you don't want to subdivide a lot from another, subdivide a lot and then you can't build on it ever. I know the soils out here are horrible. They're, they got clay, they're real cobaly, they're, they're just bony material. I have Ulster County fill in my backyard. It's like, I swear it's an acre for a three bedroom house. Is there enough room on, on that lot for a primary and a reserve? Cause they're going to have to raise systems. There's no way they're going to get away with an in-ground system. So has anybody looked at that?
So Warren, can you comment on the process to gain building approval on this said lot?
Well, I defer to Shelley since that was, you know, her primary job. But there are multiple systems having been in Shandaken that, that can be installed. Some are more costly than others. When it comes to the point of it being a buildable lot. Our town code goes to what, what facilities are available, water sewer. And consequently, if neither are, then we go to acreage as to a requirement. This lot meets the acreage requirement. So it would behoove the purchaser or the builder doing their due diligence as to what the cost might or might not be. Obviously, like I said, Shelley's had more experience in this. She's had to put a raised system in. Which means it's entirely possible. You look at the other lots, eight, nine and 10 are of similar sizes to the lot that's being posed. So if they were able to install a system, it would just stand reason that at some point they can install a system on this proposed lot.
Has anybody taken a look at that at least to make that determination?
Shelley, I think what Warren was saying is that per our town code. We allow lots to be subdivided based on what services are available. And in this case, there are no services available. And in that case, then it's just lot size. And that will allow a subdivision to occur. Whether or not it's buildable or what steps and plans and, and technology the landowner uses. That's up to them at a future point in time. So we don't restrict the subdivision based on the ability to build a house, only on the size of the lot in this, in this case.
So you, so the town obviously doesn't care if it's buildable or not.
That's right.
Unusual. Most townships require it to be shown that it's buildable. You know, all the ones I dealt with did. And then in water, are they in or out of district for Halcyon Park? Water?
Are you in district?
Not in the district.
You're out of district? Is that what they're planning on doing? They would come off Halcyon Park water? Out of district users if that were the case, correct?
The applicant rep might want to discuss if there's an interest in out of district use for water.
Hello, Hunter.
By applicant Bible Baptist Church or the buyers?
Well, the potential, she's, she's asking, she's asking about the use on the, like on the potential new lot.
Doesn't matter at this point. All I really wanted to know was if they're, they're out of district users and they got to be treated as such, correct?
Correct.
Cause it's a totally different, it's a totally different, or there should be, maybe there's not in town also, but there should be a totally different fee. Schedule for somebody.
There is.
Someone who is. And then the survey map, the one that's actually on the, on the. On the, the real estate lot, it shows it's square, but it's obviously not square. So there's, there's, so there's ingress and egress from two points on this property. One from lot nine, which is Niles and one from the town road, which is at the end of Ruby Meadows Road. They have that square cul-de-sac, a rectangular cul-de-sac. I mean, I, I guess one of the concerns is what they plan on doing with that. Are they going to make those all connect? So they have a big driveway going crazy out there or I, I just, I just a question. And that would be pre-building, I mean. Since they have two ways in and two ways out. Which doesn't show up everywhere, but.
Was that Mrs. Mertens?
Yes, it was.
Okay, what's, what is the two ways in, two ways in and two ways out? I missed.
You have egress to the Niles property, which is lot nine. And then you also have ingress and egress to the town road, which is Ruby Meadows Road, that square cul-de-sac at the end of the square cul-de-sac.
Okay, so with the, what was the, so what was the, I don't understand what was the question.
Concern was that it was going to become a big circular, not circular, but.
Oh, you mean would, would a road, would a road go through one property to another property?
You've got people going crazy out there. Yeah, I just, it's a question.
I, I don't think the Niles are, I can't speak for the Niles, but I don't think they're going to put a road through their property to connect to this property. To then connect to Ruby, Ruby Meadows Road. And they're certainly not going through the church, so.
May I speak?
Yeah, Hunter, go ahead.
So I've been a resident of 12 Ruby Meadows Road for about 25 years. Regarding the property, like I said, I lived here my whole life. The property, there will be no wraparound road. Actually, the property line where it ends is the back of 12 Ruby Meadows Road with the church property. And also regarding the system, every system in this neighborhood is actually in ground system.
Mine's in Ulster County fill, which is above ground.
Other than Shelley's, because I spoke, I spoke with the town as well as Quigley. And like I said, other than that, they're all in-ground systems. In terms of, also in terms of the back of the property. The way it's subdivided, there's only a small strip between the 12 and then this new lot. There will not be a road cut back there. And regarding the road coming in from Ruby Meadows Road, the way the lot is broken up, just like Lenny said, it's coming in right between those two houses. There was, like I said before, like this neighborhood was built, there was no disagreement with that. It was supposed to be the last lot of Ruby Meadows Road. That's about all I got regarding like the system and the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I guess my concern is if the driveway is right at the top of the hill, it's essentially on my property. Yeah, I mean, it's not on my property to play this as well, but you know? And I wasn't here when this was all discussed, so I certainly didn't agree that it was a wonderful thing. I'm not sure I know how it benefits the neighborhood. You know? I mean, but I guess, I guess it's, if, if you guys don't really care if it's buildable, you just want size, I guess.
Now, like, like I said, I'm, I'm planning eventually to build on the property in the back. Like I said, this is my decision. I grew up here. I'm not planning to make any types of roundabouts. I grew up in this, in 12 Ruby Meadows Road. And then the property was purchased in order for me to build and have a family behind my parents' house. That was the original agreement. Like I said, in terms of the water system, we had an agreement with the town already that we would add the system regarding town of Ulster. Especially with John Rhodes, who is part of the water department regarding the issue. And then in terms of the driveway, like I said, it's a subdivide and the driveway can come through that, through that gap. In terms of the last part of the neighborhood. And then also with, in terms, we'll go back to the, the systems. Like Shelley said, I was going back into on the maps. Her system was the only one that was different other than the other lots in the neighborhood, which are all about an acre, some a little bit more. And then in terms of the petition, I was going through petition today. And in terms of some of the names on the list, some are coming from the same household. Which is the lot next to 12 Ruby Meadows Road, which is 16 Ruby Meadows Road. So I just, also in terms of the petition, I would like to go through the names and kind of break this down.
I'm not sure that that, that's necessary, Hunter. We, we have the petition and, and we can do that, you know, if that's necessary.
Well, I, you know, I guess so, I guess.
Is, is there anyone else now that would, would like to speak?
Yes, this is Sal Ganges, 16 Ruby Meadows Road.
Which lot are you on this, on this picture here?
Eight.
Okay.
I, I'm still not, I'm a little confused about where if, where and if a driveway would be put for this. Possible house being put up, would it be at the end of Ruby Meadows Road in between Shelley's house and 16 Ruby Meadows Road? The like 60 foot space that has been flagged off. Is, is that my understanding?
You know?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Connor.
Regarding, sorry, regarding the driveway, it is going to be between Route 16 Ruby Meadows Road. And the buttons. And there is a right away there right now into that lot. And that was the plan from the start. We're not, like I said, in terms of the property itself. Like it's going to be a regular acre lot, which is similar to every other subdivision in this neighborhood. And that was my only, like, in terms of the driveway, I wanted to come in from Ruby Meadows because that's the, based on the subdivision, that was the design driveway.
So in other words, will we write at the top of the hill where, which borders my property? My driveway? Right? Right, Hunter?
Yes, the driveway, the driveway is going to be coming up, like I said, across from Lenny's, ordering.
It's right along, it's right along my property line where that hill is by my, by my driveway. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I, I would like to add something as well. This is Denise Zionazato at 23 Ruby Meadows Road. And I would like.
Which one are you, which lot are you, Denise?
I, I'm lot six, 23 Ruby Meadows Road.
Okay.
I, I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned that this is now an issue 30 years later. When this was already approved by the town board. When we purchased our lot, that easement was there and they told us that that was already a zone. That was already zoned to, to be an easement from the church. And that it was accepted back then, 30 years ago. I don't understand why now it's an issue.
Uh, Sal Ganges from lot eight, 16 Ruby Meadows Road. We weren't here 30 years ago. We don't know anything about any agreement. No one told us about an agreement when we bought the house.
And there certainly is no issue being shown on this, on this drive.
All we want to do is find out what's, what's going on and what's right and what's wrong. It doesn't affect you. What do you care?
It does affect me. There will be, there will be another.
Hold on a second, guys. Hold on a second. This is a very simple minor subdivision. That it is covered in the town code. Where the subdivision must meet certain size restrictions. And in this case, it has road access to Ruby Meadows Road. And the town code permits the subdividing of the church's property. What was before or what agreements existed or whatever, unless they're in the deed of the house. I don't think they're worth discussing today. What we're discussing today simply is what is allowed today. And this lot is allowed by the town code to be subdivided from the church. So we want to make sure that there's not substantive issues. And we want to give the neighbors an opportunity to comment on the project, which you guys have done. I appreciate that.
And this is Shelley. I think, I think anytime something like this is done, it has to, a subdivision has to go for a public hearing. And I think neighbors that weren't there 30 years ago have every right to ask every question they want. I'm in no way saying I don't want them to subdivide and or build on it as long as it's done in. Codes, rules or regulations. That was my point.
Yep.
But I don't, I don't know that I see it's a big benefit to anyone, but whatever. Yeah. So that was it. And I, you know, and I'm sorry if somebody took offense to the fact that I'm asking questions, but I have every right to, I think.
Absolutely. And, and, and that, that's not what I was responding to.
No, no, but other people were. And I, and I didn't mean to be offensive. If I was, I do apologize. I don't think I was. You know? But.
And just so everybody knows, if they do choose down the road to build a house, they would still have to abide by all the codes for the town. So I mean, they would still have to apply for a curb cut permit and a building permit. So, and. Department of Health. So they would still have to abide by everything. Yes, exactly. Yes, they would still have to go through that entire process. So they can't just, you know, subdivide and put a house up in a month. They have to go.
I'm fully aware of that. I'm, I've just never, all the townships, I didn't do much in the town of Ulster. But like farm plan and always, you always, and Ellen, you always had to show the lot was buildable.
And in, in the town of Ulster, that's not the case.
Yeah. Well, just my personal opinion, I think it should be, but that's just my personal opinion.
Appreciate that.
No, you don't. That's okay. So anyway, that's all I had to say. And again, I'm not, I'm not adverse to anything you're doing. I just think I had to ask the questions. I have to feel comfortable with what's going on and. So anyway, that's all I had to say, and again, I'm not, I'm not adverse to anything you're doing, I just think, I had to ask the questions, I have to feel comfortable with what's going on, and that's, that was it, you know? Okay?
Understood.
And this is Anna Ganges, what is it, Lot 8? I, my concern, I already told you my concern, you know, I've only been here, I've been here 13 years. I didn't know, you know, I just know where I sit lower than the other homes. In between Niles Homes and the church's property, I sit lower and, you know, and it affects me and Shelley, because it's in between our homes, right in between our homes. Privacy is an issue also, you know what I mean? And I have a pump on my next step flag there.
You know, the other question is, is there a map that shows that easement, or that easement just is no longer valid?
Is that the proper terminology for this, that there's an easement on somebody else's property? Because I don't, I don't think that's the case.
The only way it would still be valid, if the property that was going across, it was within the deed, so it would have to be within the church's deed that they have an easement, because I believe that easement would be on the church's property.
I looked at the deed for the church and the other properties, and I didn't see any record of an easement.
Okay, yeah, that's what typically happens, you know, they never make it to the, to the deed, and then they're not really enforceable at that point, you know? So.
Right, can I ask a question, who owns the church?
I don't own the church, there's a pastor and three other trustees who are given the oversight of the church, the responsibility to take care of the church, but it's really God's church.
Oh, God, somebody owns the church, somebody put the church there.
There are trustees that are responsible for the care of the church. That's one of the reasons we're selling this one acre to put back the funds into the church, the physical property. So it'll benefit us, of course, and it will benefit the Niles family, particularly Hunter.
Okay, is there anyone else who has not spoken that would like to speak?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is, yes, Guy Leonard. I'm at 17 Ruby Meadows Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and which lot is that on this, on this diagram?
I think it's about a number, I think it's five.
Okay, yep.
I'm just, I built here, I was one of the first people to live in here. I'm at the lowest point in the neighborhood. Pre-existing houses that are getting water damage, their houses were either dug too low. What have, what have they done to fix the problem? Obviously, it's flooded without the house being in there. I don't know what their problem is with flooding, I'm at the lowest point in the neighborhood. I do have an in-ground septic system. I heard there's a 60-foot right-of-way over there, a driveway is only 24 feet wide. It wouldn't affect either side of either property if it was going up there. And my, my big concern or point is, the property was for sale for months, and everybody had an opportunity to buy it.
Yeah, but it was sold in a couple of days. It was in contract within a few days.
It, it doesn't matter.
I never saw a sign originally, no?
Both, both parties live right next to it and saw the signs up for sale.
They sold it before the signs went up?
No.
It was in contract.
Yes, yes.
No.
That is true.
I want to know when the signs-
It's okay, it's a move, I mean, it really doesn't matter at this point.
Okay, as far as, I think, guys referring to me, the Ganges, of how our property sits lower, yes, it does, and we had to have grading done, so the water doesn't come towards the home. And they all know that, all the neighbors, because they're very territorial, the people around here. But my, my home had grading, and that improved on the issue that I had prior to moving here. So I'm just concerned, and I just want it documented, that if, if there is a home built, and there is other issues to, I want to be sure that it's documented, because I don't want to be responsible to, you know, if there's water running down that hill because of a building, and you know what I'm saying? I just, I'm, that's my concern, if nobody likes it.
Did you not say you had a dehumidifier running 24 hours a day?
Yeah, I keep my, my dehumidifier on in the basement, yes, I do.
That means, that means you got, that means you got moisture.
Moisture, yes, yes. If you can see behind the house, you can see-
Is the church, is the church got an in-ground septic system?
I don't know.
You do, right? So everybody in the neighborhood-
I'm talking about the church, I'm talking about Niles-
Well, that's, that's, that's the land, that's the land where it's going to be built on, and if the church has got an in-ground septic system, every other house in this neighborhood, I believe, like Hunter said before, besides Shelley, has an in-ground septic system.
He's going to have an in-ground septic system?
You don't know that until you do the perk test, you do deep test-
No one, no, no one- They can't be established until they've done the survey. This is simply, is, is this, does this subdivision meet the town codes?
Right, exactly, and that's, that's all, then it is fine, I just think everybody had the right to bring up their points and speak. And at the end of the day, he's right next to Lot 7, which is me, which has a huge Ulster County Phil, which is an above-ground system. But he's right adjacent to me, have you know, you don't know, soils can change in 10 feet.
I understand, Shelley.
You should know that guy.
Oh, I do know that. But going by, if you're looking at a nine out of 10 got in-ground septic systems, and a property where the church is has an in-ground septic system, I would almost believe-
I don't know that, I didn't, I didn't look, I tell, I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't look. I didn't look, you know? I just know that I have an above-ground, I'm right adjacent to him, so you don't know. You know what I mean?
But you're more, you're more wet back there, they're up on top where it's dry, I don't, I would believe is an in-ground septic system.
I've never had any water issues at all at my house.
Right, and you're, and you're lower than your neighbor.
Yeah, and there's, there's many reasons, guys, there's many reasons why a house might have water from how it was constructed, whether there's French drains around this foundation, whether the foundation was sealed, whether it's seeping out from underneath. There's lots of, there's lots of reasons, that part of the building process, and it will go through the building process with Warren, and stormwater runoff, Warren, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that's part of the site plan for the house, correct?
I was, I was about ready to interject, that there is a code in property maintenance that an adjacent property is not allowed to create a problem with any property that exists due to discharge from rainwater or the like.
Who's, who is he, do you have an engineer for the planning board that reboots these plans?
Warren.
As far as single-family dwellings?
Yeah.
Single-family dwellings, according to state code, are not required by an engineer, unless the disturbance is over an acre, at which point we have to look up, it's an NMS 4.
You, you do understand, though, that, you do understand, the Ulster County Department of Health requires an engineer no matter what.
As far as, as far as septic system.
Yeah, septic and water, septic and water, and they do look at, you know, they'll take a quick, quick gander at the drainage runoff. But septic and water has to have sealed and signed drawings by an FPE that's licensed in New York State, without regard to what the town requires.
Absolutely, I still adhere to that. All of, all the plans should come to me, I don't even issue a permit until the department has signed off.
We've worked together.
Correct.
Yeah, and I wish you hadn't retired.
I wish I hadn't too now. But, oh, well.
I believe Edwin has, has his hand up.
Can anyone? Hello?
Yes. There we go.
Hi, hi, my name is Ed Martinado. I'm a, I'm a real estate broker with the Murphy Realty Group, and I represent Bible Baptist Church. I just heard it said that this property was sold before it went on the market. And I wanted to tell you all that that is absolutely not true.
Edwin, you're cutting out, you're cutting out a lot-
And nobody's saying it, you want me to interpret? Would you like me to interpret what he was trying to say?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
What I wanted to say, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, good. So what I wanted to say was that it was said that this property was sold before it went on the market, and that is absolutely not true. The property was placed on the market on December 11th. On that day, I placed two signs on the property. One in the access off of Ruby, Ruby, Ruby Meadow Road, and another one at the end of the driveway to the church, just to indicate where the, where the property would be. We did not, we did not accept an offer for the property, and two offers came in until exactly one month later, it was January 11th, when we accepted an offer from the Niles family. And have their own writing, and that's the case. So anyone, seeing one of the neighbors could have, at any time, called the Murphy Realty Group, or their favorite Realtor, whoever that might be, and placed an offer in for this property. I just wanted everyone to know that, everyone had ample opportunity to purchase this property.
That was the point I brought up. And everybody disagreed with me, this is Guy Leonard talking, and everybody had an opportunity to buy it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks for that clarification, so now, now we know the history of the, the sale of this property. Is there anyone else who has not spoken that would like to, like to add a public comment? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman, Larry.
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Nering?
Yes. Was there a discussion among the board on this? David, I believe you've prepared a resolution for this?
Yes, I have.
Okay, can you read the summary, please?
Sure. And for clarity, I'm Dave Church, the planning consultant to the town. Bible Baptist Church, two lot minor subdivision. Whereas the applicant, Bible Baptist Church, is seeking a minor two-lot subdivision approval in accordance with Section 16110 of the Town Code. Whereas the applicant proposes to subdivide a 1.003-acre new lot from the existing lot, SBL 3911-1-5.112. And whereas the proposed lots comply with the minimum lot size and dimensions of the R30 residential zoning district, and were as pursuant to the Town Code, the action is classified as a minor subdivision, which is subject to approval by the Town of Ulster Planning Board. Whereas the application materials in support of the proposed action are listed in the resolution and are a complete application in summary. But they are listed out. Whereas referral to the Ulster County Planning Board was not required pursuant to the Ulster County Planning Board Land Use Referral Guide, since the proposed action involves fewer than five lots. And access roads and structures are not situated in order to your front. And whereas the planning board considered the application material submitted by the applicant, supported the proposed action on the comments from its consultants made via memorandum. Whereas in accordance with Section 1619 of the proposed action is a minor subdivision, the planning board must hold at least one public hearing. Whereas at the April 13th, 2020 meeting, the planning board scheduled this matter for a final public hearing at the May 2021 Planning Board meeting. And whereas at its May 18th, today, 2021 meeting, the planning board opened the public hearing, and thereafter closed the public hearing. And whereas with this resolution, the planning board classifies the action as a seeker on listed action, and upon review, the entire record issues a seeker negative declaration after concluding that the action will not pose any significant, large, or adverse environmental impact. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board has determined that they have complied fully with the procedural requirements of Part 617 Seeker, State Environmental Quality Review Act. And further be resolved, the Town of Ulster Planning Board hereby grants two-lot minor subdivision approval as described above to Bible Baptist Church, subject to the conditions and limitations, restrictions set forth below. On the plat may shall be filed with the Office of the County Clerk after sign, signature by the Chairman of the Planning Board. I put a placeholder to if any members want to discuss further conditions. Hearing none, the other two or three condition is no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to any plat after approval by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plat. Three, the final plat must be filed with the Office of the County Clerk within 62 days of the, approved by the planning board, and four, all fees, including consultant fees, shall be paid.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve?
I add a couple things to the resolution.
Who's speaking?
Jason Kovacs.
Yeah, Jason.
Can we add no further subdivisions of the parcel?
So, Jason, it's Dave, there shall be no further subdivision of the-
Yes, if that's, if that's agreeable to the board.
Yeah, this would be, is this R30, this is R30, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be able to subdivide it further anyway, based on the one acre size.
Nice to put it right in the resolution, though.
Yep, yep, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
For argument's sake, if somehow water and sewer were secure, central water and sewer, it would change the dimensional requirements, but that isn't currently available.
I'm fine with the addition, Jason.
We'll make that number, the, well, I had that placeholder number two, I'll make that number two, Jason.
That's fine, David, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Jason?
You know, there was a concern about someone using this parcel to access Ruby Meadows Road on another, another avenue for ingress and egress. Maybe a prohibition on using this parcel for ingress and egress to, through another lot.
Wouldn't that need to go through planning?
Just a suggestion to-
No, I understand.
Put in the resolution, that's all.
I, I don't have a problem with it, I don't think that the owner, the new purchaser of the property will have an issue. He stated that he doesn't plan on using it that way, so I, I'm okay with that as well.
Remind me, is, this is Dave again, is, the map has it as Lot 2A, is that right? Ingress and egress to new lot. We'll get the right name. I think it's-
Two, it's 2A.
To, to new lot, 2A.
Yes, 2A.
Shall be restricted to-
Existing Ruby Road entrance.
Restricted to existing Ruby Road, Ruby Meadow Road. How's that?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have now, with those additions, you have six conditions to the approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve or reject from the board?
I make that motion.
Which motion, Anna?
To approve it.
I'll second it. Gabby, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Nering?
Yes. All right, thank you all. I believe the next agenda item is Pioneer Solar. This is old business in discussion with the site plan. I think a couple of comments I have here, and Frank, you attended the county discussion last month, but I think that we put forth- And Frank, you attended the county um, discussion last month, but I think that we put forth. An incomplete packet to the county. Is that my read of what occurred last?
About it.
Yeah. And I, I want to do a better job in the future. As we push back on the county, as we, you know, strive to partner with them, we need to make sure that we do everything. That we can to um, to get complete accurate packets out to them. Um, Da- David, what do we need to do with this one here? Uh, because it's, it's got a lot of open, open items.
Well, yes, and they, they intersect the, the questions that the planning board had at the previous month meeting. Do we intersect to some degree with the uh. Uh, county comments, reminding the board that this. Uh, the planning board plays an advisory role here and the town board has final approval and made the referral to the county. I did speak to the applicant at length today. Um, and I believe uh, an applicant reps on the.
Yeah, it's, this is Zach showing, I'm here, guys.
So Zach's gonna, Zach, you're prepared to summarize the status of. By my count, there are five open items. Did we, did I get that right, Zach? That you wanna, is it okay, Chairman, if Zach goes over this for the applicant?
Yeah, absolutely. Zach, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So I mean, I've done a bunch of these. So the stuff that came back um, is no surprise to me, you know. First thing I think is just the decommissioning plan there. Um, my experiences with all the other projects I've done, I've always negotiated that directly with the town attorney. So. Um, I can pre- prepare and provide decommission agreement. It's not a problem at all. Um, you know, and I can explain in a letterhead, a cover letter to cover all these items. Make a point about that, you know, that here's a decommission agreement, but moving forward, we propose to, you know, have a final agreement and negotiation with the town attorney. The next thing is endangered species. Um, I am aware of the bats from the EAF we did. And I have experience with bats on other sites we've cleared and whatnot. Um, the way to work around that with my experience is we can't clear from April 1st until October 31st. So we would just clear between. Uh, November 1st and March 31st, which is in line with when we'd want to clear. Um, so again, I can, I can answer that question and do a write-up on that. SWIP is still underway. Unfortunately, that has been delayed. But I'm hoping to get that wrapped up for the next meeting. Um, I always prepare, prepare and provide a SWIP for any site that would clear that's over an acre. Viewshed analysis. Um, what I can do for that, I mean, we know that we, you really can't see it. And I think they looked at it without the contours, but what I can do. Is have my team essentially assemble, we could take an aerial, you know, zoomed out of the parcel. Um, take four, four or five vantage points, 209 through a sock hill, et cetera. And drop those pin locations. In relation to the property and then take photos to show where it is. And then as far as the last thing here, access road. Uh, basically requesting a driveway permit from Ulster County DPW. And again, I think that's just an error in the review. Um, there's existing access that we'd be using for that. And, you know, I can, I can draft all that and explain those details.
I, it's Dave, Dave Church again, Chairman, I, um. I uh, have given. Zach uh, the contact information for the senior planner at Ulster County to make sure that uh. Uh, when they're ready, they can receive this in the, the right format and. In a timely way, so we can look to. Position this for uh, the next step in June.
Warren. Um, I will make a comment that for the last major solar project that we had. For the view shed, they actually did a balloon test.
Okay.
Which I know kind of seems a little. Oversight here due to the fact that you're five foot. Maybe six foot off the ground.
Yeah.
But that's, that's what they did. That's what we submitted and it was consequently approved.
Yeah, and I, I have experience with doing balloon tests before. Um, so I'm happy to do that too. If, if we know that's gonna, you know. Meet the requirements, then I'm happy to do it that way. It's not a problem.
Of course, the last test we had was 190 feet per cell tower. I don't think you're gonna meet that criteria.
No. Nope, not at all.
This is uh, Steve Church again. This is an elevated site with, for lack of their term, a plateau, almost like a. A west, they call them a butte. Where it's fairly flat up there. It's an unusually kind of screened setting. That you can only appreciate if you look at the terrain. So uh, if necessary, but I shared with them also the. Uh, environmental assessment form addendum for visual impact, which they've agreed to fill out.
Yeah, and I actually filled that out uh, this afternoon and sent that back to, to Gabby. So if anybody needs anything, you know, that is completely up to.
I believe I added it to the Dropbox when I received it this afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately that's kind of one of the greatest points of this development is, I mean, everybody wants solar, right? But no one really wants to, we see it. And. With this, you know, it's a excellent point of develop, development for us, but. You know, you can't see it from any vantage points. So it's, you know, not going to visually disturb anyone.
Especially since I attempted to access the site. Yeah, it's very well hidden.
Yep.
Yeah, guys, this Gabby, you putting the form up?
Yeah, we can see the form, Gabby.
Yeah, I'm putting it up so you guys can see it.
Yeah, we can see it.
Yes. I mean, so you can see, you know, we have to check for anything that's applicable. There's really nothing applicable. The only thing that we checked. Uh, is on. Bullet point five there, any, are there any visually similar projects within uh, two miles? And to my understanding, that would be the uh. The Ulster County Solar landfill project, which I think we checked was just about two miles from the site.
Whi- which one is that?
That's on the landfill behind Shopbreak.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Gabby.
No problem.
So, so Zach, you know what needs to be done? Jason and Warren, you're comfortable with the, um, the steps that they're gonna take?
I am.
I am.
All right. Any questions from the board? All right. Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
All right. The next is uh, Central Hudson Hurley Avenue Substation, uh, Site Plan Amendment. David, do you want to take us through that?
Okay, so this was a submission uh, before my time that it's been reintroduced. Uh, before your time as well, Jeffrey on the board, maybe. I don't know about for Warren, but um. I would, yeah, an application was made, it was pulled, it's a, a returned earlier this year. This again is a, uh. An action that's allowed use by public utility. Uh, they're looking to expand and upgrade the substation off Hurley Avenue. That's known to the board. That's been referred to the county uh, through its, uh, it's a final approvals by the town board. So again, the planning board's in. A coordinated advisory role. The county, the town board referred this to the county, the county returned, uh, which we got today. Um, a memo of no county impact. Um, from that. So uh, it's my view where. This board's in a position to recommend uh. Approval with or without any conditions uh. To the town board to take the final step to close seeker. Um, and to consider a resolution to approve at their next available meeting.
Any questions from the board or discussion items? Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we uh, recommend to the town board to close seeker and we recommend approval for this project.
Almquist here, I'll second that motion.
Gabby?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right. Thank you. We have new business. Um, the first one is Glide Path to Tilcon Minerals. This has been a, a topic of discussion this year. Uh, this is simply um, needing an approval for. An extension for the filing of the maps. I believe they're over their original 60 day. Time limit. And so this is just an extension for filing. No other changes have been made. David, do you have any other notes on this one?
No, it's straightforward. You could just do a simple vote. Extend the time period.
And he just.
Aaron Hayes, and I am here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. A- any discussion items from the board? Uh, do we have a motion? On the table then?
I'll make that motion, Mrs. Andrew, to extend.
I'll second that.
Gabby?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Aaron. Good luck.
Can you remind Mr. Wolvan to file in the 62 days, please?
Will do my best.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item is Moon Burger. This is the old ice cream castle between the, the old quick check and the new quick check there at the corner of Soft Hill. And Washington Avenue. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion the last days on, uh, on items. I understand the applicant has um. Gone to great lengths to uh, complete some of the outstanding items. Da- David, uh, where are we with this?
Okay, well, so uh, following a meeting with the representative who um. Is with us tonight uh, at the workshop. Uh, in discussion, um. Uh, this, this is a reuse of an existing building. Um, and site uh, for similar use, uh, or instead of ice cream, he's going to do uh. A burgers and related uh, uh. A food, food service. Um, there'll be no seating uh, inside or outside at this point proposed. It will be completely order and drive-through. The site plan has parking for employees as well as waiting spaces for people picking up uh, orders. I had raised uh, two issues and uh, I know that the board may have some. Want to ask some questions about ingress and egress and traffic flow in particular, and appearance of the building. Uh, but the applicant had supplied a site plan and some elevations. I noted reviewing that, that the site plan, uh. Earlier version. Somehow cut off the parking and gave the impression that they lack. The applicant would lack ownership control of a portion of the parking to the, what we'll call east. Of the side or the far right, as you can see it on the screen. That's been clarified today and he's provided uh. Uh, written evidence that uh. Uh, the current owner from which the applicant proposes to purchase the property. Had secured an additional 30 feet. Of the lot going east, uh, the original property with, with the ice cream stand that had only 60 something feet. Of frontage that now has all, more like 90. Um, so that's been clarified. However, there were elements of a complete site plan. Um, that were missing and I pointed him to the. The applicant to the listing in the town code of what uh, at a minimum needs to be. In a site plan. Um, he subsequently, which I'm sure he's prepared to go over, uh, if you have, are willing to let him do that now. He subsequently uh, this afternoon. Uh, submitted a, a fuller site plan with a, with attachments. It included elevations, signage details. Lighting details and landscaping details, which were missing previously. And the site plan also includes the essential title. Legends uh, uh, scale. Um, and other references on it that uh. Would have made it uh, something the. Uh, that's, that's potentially approvable now, but I will strongly, I will footnote that uh. Uh, we just received this this afternoon and many of the board members may or may not have even had a chance to look, but. Uh, with your willingness, Chairman, uh, the applicant, I believe, is on the call to go over this.
Yeah, let's turn it over to the applicant then.
Uh, yes, well, uh, first I want to thank the board for your consideration and. To Chairman Ring and uh, and to David and uh, to Warren for. Uh, and, and, and to Gabby uh, for helping me through this process. And I apologize for my um, omissions. Um, I have, I have not been through this approval process before, but um, as soon as I got them this morning, I, I, with Gabby's guidance and David's guidance. Jumped into action to fill some of those gaps. Um, I hope that it's, it is uh, it is complete or relatively complete now. Um, but just for, for quick background, uh, when I uh. Uh, bought my home in Marble Town in 2015, the ice cream castle was always a fixture, something that I drove by. I continue to drive by all the time. I'm sure that everyone on this uh, on this Zoom is um, entirely familiar. Uh, a tiny little island between the two big quick checks. Um, I went many times uh, as a, as a customer. Um, and the intention now is to essentially take uh, what, what the ice cream castle was doing with a vast menu, which, you know, included everything from. Um, you know, all kinds of ice creams and shakes to uh, burgers and hot dogs and fries and condense that down to the essentials. Uh, in my view, which are burgers, fries and shakes. Uh, do those things really, really well. Uh, and um, as uh, David said, to. Take uh, the existing use of the space and um, do as little as possible to it. Uh, for time and efficiency, so that I can hopefully uh, be open uh, later this summer. Um, and uh, and for budget. Um, and essentially what you see is a, is a reimagining of the facade. To modernize, um, hopefully make it very tasteful, um, but exciting. Uh, and um. And I'm happy to walk through uh, any of the elements. I will just say too, that um, as I'm sure many of you know, or all of you know, uh, the drive-through is an existing feature of the. Um, of uh, the Ice Cream Castle now. Um, I have uh. Taken great lengths to uh, envision and work with some folks who are uh, much more expert in that aspect than I am, to make sure that it can be. Uh, incredibly efficient such that um, we have space in the drive-through, we move very, very quickly and are not relying on uh, street parking or anything else. Hence the no on-premise dining and making this a drive-through only concept.
Okay. Can you scroll up on the, the screen, uh, Gabby? Uh, I guess one of the, one of the issues and concerns that has been there since day one is the, the parking and the flow of the traffic. Can, I, I don't know if this is an updated view or the current view of. Um, what you're thinking with the flow of the traffic, but I, I would be interested in hearing. Your uh, explanation of how it works.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Um, so, so this is, it, it is essentially uh, the same existing uh, parking lot design. Uh, as the, as the castle now with the four parking spots, uh, which conforms to the code of, uh, based on the building size. Um, which would really just be employee parking, since there's no uh, on-premise dining, so you wouldn't have guest parking. Um, and what, uh, what we have tried to do here is to um, create additional capacity, should it be needed in the drive-through lane. Uh, I know the code specifies five stacking spots. Um, I believe with what, uh, what we can do with a little bit of creativity is get to at least eight. And what you see is five to the service window. Also note that we add a, um, a menu board with a speaker, uh, like a, you know, any classic drive-through spot uh, that we all go to. But then the addition here is, um, is uh, the waiting boxes that you see toward the exit on the left-hand side. Uh, so you can get two cars waiting there, again, should they be needed, and, and another car behind. Which is three ahead of the drive-through window. So that's a total of eight. I, I, I want to note that uh, I would be incredibly fortunate and, and overjoyed if I had eight, eight cars in this drive-through lane at all times. Um, the, the national average for, um, for um, all fast food restaurants is three. On average, anytime, of course, there are periods where that's going to be busier, lunchtime hours, et cetera. Um, but I've done a bunch of. Uh, research along Route nine of the various restaurants there, um, you know, all of the usual suspects. Um, and you know, even at max capacity. Um, and you know, even at max capacity, um, they're not uh, much above that. Um, if they are, um, you know, also recognizing that they are huge brands and, you know, I'd be very lucky to do a fraction of what they do.
So, i- if I may ask a question, um, if you have Waiting Bay One and Waiting Bay Two uh, waiting for their burgers, and then the car behind them has already got their burgers, can they get around um, Waiting Bay One and Bay, Waiting Bay Two, or do they have to wait themselves until one of those bays is freed up? And food has been delivered?
Sure, sure. Uh, yes, so, so um, ideally, you, you know, we would have a space for a um, a passing lane uh, for that very reason, but you know, and, you know, unfortunately, just the design of this, of the space is limiting, sort of like the uh, Taco Bell on Route Nine, which once you're in that, once you're in that lane, you're not getting out of it. Um, and so, but the idea here is during normal use, uh, when you might have a couple of cars in line and you don't need eight, eight cars of capacity, you would not be using those waiting boxes, except when you get a car that pulls up to the window, has a big order, that's going to hold up cars behind, in which case you could send that car to one of the two waiting boxes. Um, and then you would have a runner from the kitchen who would deliver the food to the car, and you still have space for other cars to be passing by. If we were in a situation where we had max capacity, you had eight cars, which would be very busy, um, we would have a runner out there doing, you would, you would pay at the window, and then all food would be run to those first two boxes. But again, I don't anticipate that that would be something that happens very often, frankly. I just wanted to prepare for the, you know, the worst-case scenario.
Thank you.
Worst case would be a couple of my local restaurants who have a queue, not that they designed it, of fifteen.
Sure. Um, I, I, I
I would love to see you go to fifteen, which means you're very successful.
Thank you. I would, I would too. Uh, you know, the other thing that I, uh, you know, I'm thinking about is really um, is uh, really all um, contingencies here, and if, you know, if, if, if we find that there are periods that are very busy, uh, we would not rely only on that ordering point at the speaker, the kind of typical experience, but do what uh, what a Chick-fil-A does with Lime Busters, where you have an employer or a couple of employees uh, even out there in that line with a tablet taking orders, which can, can make the whole process much more efficient. But again, you know, at, at its most of, you know, at the most efficient level, um, you know, any of those, the, the fast food um, restaurants on Route Nine are doing easily a car uh, in forty-five seconds and just churning through, and that's the, that's the goal for us.
I, I can also comment that uh, the fronting road is Powell Lane, which is a dead end. So there is uh, little to no traffic headed down Powell's Lane. At, at any, any given point during the day. So we do have a little overflow capacity.
Uh, Jeremy, for clarifications, Dave Church again, you're, you are, are seeking a variance for a somewhat larger sign, correct?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so I, I plan to uh, get the application uh, document for that in uh, next week to Gabby and present at the um, at that zoning uh, board meeting in June. My, my hope, if there was any chance of this, just to be able to get a, a jump on this, if, if, if it was possible um, uh, to consider approval for this um, core design um, tonight, uh, contingent on either getting that sign-size variance or what I've included that I think Gabby just uh, circled is that this, the following page here just shows what the design would look like if uh, if, if, if we don't get uh, the variance for a slightly larger sign on the front facade. I'll just say that this building, it's hard to see from, from the, the elevations here, but it is tiny. Um, and so the, the, based on the, the zoning requirements, the sign for the front facade would be really tiny, and I think hardly visible from um, Washington there if uh, if we, especially between the two very large Quick Checks. Um, so that's, that's the rationale for the, for the sign uh, variance, but would still make it, um, I think, tasteful and nice to look at. Um, and uh, appealing.
What happens to the rocket?
So, so, so the, the chimney on the back here uh, is, and you know, you can see that in the elevation, so that, that is, you know, of course, where you enter the drive-through, and so um, you know, one, one idea is, could we, could we paint that with some kind of art, uh, a mural? Um, I think TBD, honestly, I think it'll depend on um, budget and, you know, kind of working out the most critical pieces of this first, and if we can come up with something that would be cool and, and delight people as they, as they drive through, um, certainly would love to. But yes, as um, as, as Warren said, I had showed when I went in for the office hours, um, uh, given the name Moon Burger, uh, and the, the natural shape of that chimney, um, you could do a cool mural of a, of a rocket or something like that to add some fun.
For the board. That's, that, that would be a mural.
Yeah, that would be visible from Soft Hill Road.
Yep. Any comments from the board on the project?
Almquist here, I'm just curious, is Moon Burger a franchise?
It, uh, not, not yet, um, and
That's optimistic.
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect to, to, to franchise, but I would certainly like to, um, you know, if it's possible, uh, if this, if this does well, um, you know, perhaps think about uh, uh, you know, a second or a third, but um, you know, I'll just say like um, like anybody who gets asked if they're running for president uh, always says, no, I'm only focused on my current job. Um, and so for me, that is, that is this one, um, and, you know, pouring everything I can into it. This is uh, entirely a venture um, of uh, of me as a um, as a sole business person, um, and uh, with some good advice from friends. Um, and I was just to mention that I used to uh, run a, run a uh, PR firm and uh, Shake Shack was a client of mine for ten years, uh, and so I think that's part of what's in my DNA, and so I want to be able to provide a product to the community that is um, that is really, really good, uh, that's a great experience, um, a premium experience, but accessible to people.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
So I know that this building is challenged from the beginning, even before the ice cream, I think the Ice Cream Castle put the castles on it um, back ten plus years ago. Um, so you're challenged with, you know, not only funding, but the actual, you know, basic frame and structure that you have to work with. Um, how did you come up with the renovation of the sides of the building? Um, a- and have you given thought to how it will actually look once it's, you know, these are, are great renderings, but what it will look like in practice? The aesthetics of it is, is pretty square, pretty, you know, I, I'm just, I struggle with this a little bit. I just wanted to, to hear your, your comment.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Uh, and um, so just for context on this, um, uh, one of my uh, uh, closest friends, um, is the design director for a studio in New York that does restaurant design. They do lots of um, you know, high-end restaurants. Uh, in fact, they've, they are working uh, on a project in Kingston, uh, and, and so they um, uh, were very, very kind um, to help me with this project. Um, I am not a designer, uh, they are, and you know, they have a excellent track record and aesthetic. Um, and their team came up with what I think is a really creative solution to say, the Ice Cream Castle is just a, i- is just an old house in its core, that the, that the current owner, you know, about ten years ago, built that uh, built that uh, castle motif on top of, and if you take that off, you're just left with a house, and so the challenge was, how could you take, um, how could you transform the castle, um, and modernize it, make it into something that felt like an exciting um, restaurant to visit? Uh, but also not just make it look like a house if you remove that, and so what they did is essentially, um, you know, take the castle structure in the front and do this faux facade such that you get the um, the presence of a commercial space. I think it'll look modern, but also a nod to the classic drive-throughs of the fifties and sixties with the clean white, and then, you know, some of the signage that is evocative of that nostalgia. And then essentially is just reciting the rest of the house, um, with a vertical light wood, like a light-stained pine or a cedar, which I think has, um, you know, which will read quite modern, but also in their view, you'll have a lot of warmth from that, paired with the, the modern box in the front, that'll be a nice interplay. Um, I, 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 I believe what they tell me, uh, and, and uh, so, um, uh, I'm optimistic.
Yep, no, tha- thank you for that explanation. I mean, we, we have properties like this throughout the town, whether it's our Ulster Avenue corridor and um, you know, we want to see these parcels successful, and we want to see them updated as much as can. In some cases, they get torn down and, and something new replaced. In this case, you know, you're repurposing the building, and, you know, by all means, we need um, as many buildings repurposed in the town as we can, so, um, yeah, and you know, you have competition between two green, green building locations, one on either side of you, so. Yeah.
Hi, I'm sorry, it's, it's Anna Hayner. I just have a few things that I want to say. I feel like it's just too stark, especially since it's in uptown Kingston, really, even though it's town of Ulster. It just doesn't have that, I, I don't know, that feel that we usually look for in the facade and, and stuff. Um, and if you are going to do the bigger sign for Moon Burger, I feel like the drive-through shouldn't be there. That's, that's too much wording on one side. But that's just my opinion. Um, I do think that it's a little too like mainstream for this area, but that's my opinion.
Sure, uh, may I respond?
Yes, absolutely, sorry.
Oh, no, that, um, tha- thank you. I, I appreciate that, and, and um, you know, it, I, I'll just say that it's, it is important to me um, that the character uh, uh, fits in with the community, um, and that's one of the things that I've wanted to achieve. Um, I, I, I agree with you that if you, I think if you put this in uptown Kingston, I think that this would look out of place, given all the old stone houses. I think what makes this feel um, quite at home where it is, is that you are between the two Quick Checks, which are, you know, inherently very large, bright, you know, gas stations, and so I think it, what we try to do is kind of fit in with the classic aesthetic of fast food, which, you know, most fast food restaurants are not necessarily known for being the most aesthetically pleasing, um, but find a way to marry that, um, the, the context of those gas stations with something that, that feels um, modern and interesting. I, I think um, with the way that the, the, um, the structure will actually um, come to life, uh, apart from these renderings, that it'll look uh, quite um, approachable, uh, and w- warmer than it may feel just looking at these. I don't have the benefit of showing you all the reference images, which the designers looked at of other restaurants and spaces that I think exude the warmth that they were going for with the wood and, and the white. Um, but they, they looked at, you know, lots of, like, if you even look at, uh, you know, Shake Shacks, um, you know, those are often big, like, hulking metal black buildings, uh, yet Shake Shack has such a, um, you know, a, a delightful um, warmth as a brand despite that, and so I think that we'll have a good, um, I think that will give a good impression to the passerby and the repeat customer. Um, in terms of your uh, your note about the, the drive-through in the Moon Burger, um, again, I think that the, the goal there is to do a play on the classic neon signs, the um, you know, the, the, the big, um, you know, the big freestanding signs that used to exist with arrows, and it's not exactly that, it's a, it's an updated version. Um, but I think when somebody sees that, they'll get that design cue, and it will feel nostalgic. The reason that I do think that the drive-through and the Moon Burger are both important on the front is um, I think if you don't know that this is drive-through, I think you may be less likely to visit. I think a lot of people who are just driving by in Washington Ave, going to work or going home, um, like many uh, of us, you know, these days especially, I think are in a rush, and I think, uh, I think that's an important point for attracting uh, um, customers. But the other thing I do just want to point out is, um, although they look like really big signs on this rendering, when you see that space and you see, you know, the setback from Washington, um, the uh, the actual size of those signs is quite modest.
Well, and you're challenged with competing against the big Quick Check signs, and, and, you know, this is a very, you know, ve- very small parcel with a small building, so I, I, I understand what you're trying to do, and uh, frankly, it's, you know, it seems like the drive-through aspect is critical to your business model. So.
All right. And currently
One last thing I want to add, I'm sorry. Um, so across the street, they're building a strip mall, and I know we did require them to add some type of brick, because that's what uptown is about. So I don't know if maybe you can make the chimney a brick, I don't, or of, or stone of some type. I get the whole Moon Burger thing. I do like the idea. I drive past the castle every day. I never liked the castle. I'm just going to put it out there. So obviously, anything's going to be better than the castle, but um, I just think it's a big ask to ask for that much wording on one side of a building. I know that there's a certain like dimension of how much signage, like a percentage, so I just want to warn you about that, that you might have to give and take. That's all I was getting at with the signage. Um, but I do know, and the white part, like, what is that material exactly?
So, so yes, and you know, and in the previous application, I actually had some reference images for the materials there, um, and I'm sorry, that's not on, on this version here.
It's okay.
That white is a um, is a corrugated metal.
Okay.
Will just be, it, it, so it is bright and white, but it has a um, it, it has the, the texture that you're just seeing, you know, on the side of a barn or a roof. Um, and, and I was surprised because I didn't expect, I, I don't have the imagination to think about using something that for a space like this, but when the designers showed me the reference images of a bunch of spaces that use that material, it just looks really, really beautiful. Um, and uh, modern, um, striking, uh, but you also with the white, and then the wording on the white with the black and the red, get the, oh, and you can see right there, actually, in that, in that page, if you want to go um, back up in the top, a little photo in the top, uh, yeah, so that's
Okay.
Texas.
Just turning it the other direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just surprised at how, at how that material really comes alive, um, in
The rest of the board, Frank or, or Larry or um, Andrew, any, any comments or concerns, questions?
I'm, I'm good with that, you know, it's, it does be, uh, here's the same usage as the ice cream shop, so it's not a change of user, I think it looks good with, uh, you know, with, in its comment, taking into account, um, you know, to make the nicest uh, finished product, but uh, no, I'm good with everything. Good luck to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think right off the throwaway, it's going to probably work, so.
Thank you. Well, I, I, I hope, with your approval, that, you know, you'll, you'll come and visit.
All right, um, there's nothing else. Do, i- is there a motion on the table? For this?
Uh, Dave? Chairman, let me know, Steve, again. Um, so, uh, there's this, the, this distinct uh, items of, does the board want to uh, make a comment in support or uh, or otherwise for the sign variance to the ZBA, um, which this board's done before with other applications. And then the second is uh, being the, maybe the only person that had some ability to review this this afternoon, the fuller site plan that was submitted today. Um, I, I will note that you, in my uh, uh, advice, you do now have a full site plan application, and he has settled the ownership uh, control question that was open from the previous discussion, the previous month. Um, uh, and it is an action that you have the full authority to uh, to review and approve. It's not subject It's not subject to environmental review. It's a type two action. Uh, it's not referable to the county. So as of, uh, middle of the afternoon today, you have everything you need to approve. The question is, is the board comfortable, um, based on what they had previously versus what was received today to act now? Or do you want to hold it over? So you've got those three options. The, you want to put a comment in on a sign variance? Do you want to act tonight? Or do you want to hold it over in, for the June meeting?
I mean, I would like to act tonight and just, um, you know, so I can get on with, uh, his plans.
I agree.
Because not, not a change in use. I, I'm okay with, um, approval tonight.
I, I, I think that we, from my perspective, I, I think that the signage, albeit large, I, I think it's critical to his business model and the unique location of where that is, which is kind of down the hill, um, partially hidden by Sawkill, overshadowed by the Quick Check buildings. I, I would be, I would be comfortable in supporting a, um, sign variance recommendation for the, uh, the zoning board.
That's well, Jeffrey, I think that's good justification for helping the applicant. Um, I'm for that too.
I also agree.
As I, yeah, I'm Chris here. I drive that corner probably three, four times a week. And it's, uh, once you make the turn on to Sawkill, you can see the building. When you're going, before you get to the corner, you probably don't see it at all. So having a sign a little bit above average is definitely to its advantage. And I, I totally support the whole plan.
Yeah. And, and I don't think that will come back at us negatively as far as giving one applicant. Um,
I agree.
Step treatment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm good with this.
Frank, I drive that corner three, four times a day.
You're doing better than I do.
Me too, Warren, because I work at Bailey's. I go past it several times.
Okay, there, there we go.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I ride my bicycle back past that and drive past it every day. So, um, I, I actually don't even look at the, I don't even recognize the ice cream castle is there anymore.
Exactly, exactly.
So, um, so is there a motion? Um, David, do we need to re- read a resolution if the board's comfortable moving forward?
I think, well, uh, so on the recommendation of the zoning board, you were chairman of that board. Do you want, is consensus good enough?
A consensus is good enough for me.
Okay. So Gabby, you've got that in the minutes, right? Um, on the, for recommendation to the zoning board on the sign.
Yep, I could do that.
Uh, if you allow me to free form and work with Gabby tomorrow to get the resolution done, um, it would in essence be a resolution for, uh, site plan amendment for the reuse of the existing structure uh, at, uh, this tax parcel. Um, uh, forty-eight dot fourteen dash three dash thirty-four dot one hundred, um, for a drive-through restaurant. Um, as outlined and then I'll itemize the submitted materials, including, uh, Jeremy, that stuff's all dated today, correct?
Correct.
Committed. Um, I'll list, I'll cite those lists. Um, the resolution would include a reference that the, uh, planning board retains authority for approval. Um, that the action is exempt from referral to the Ulster County Planning Board pursuant to the referral agreement with the Town of Ulster, uh, as the reuse of an existing facility. Um, whereas, uh, it's a type two action under Seeker and no further a decision is required under Seeker being, uh, again, uh, uh, the reuse of an existing commercial building, uh, under four thousand square feet. Um, and that you resolve to grant conditional site plan approval subject to compliance with applicable zoning and building laws and rules, compliance with the representations made by the applicant, compliance with site plan, design plans and all details that'll be cited in the resolution. Compliance with any comments from the Town of Ulster Water Superintendent, right? Cause in the water district. Um, and the town's consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor changes of mysterious, ministerial nature, which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances. And all fees, including consultant fees shall be paid. Um, but I have one question probably for Jason. Um, so Jason, he's got option one and option two, uh, with the sign, with or without a variance. How do we handle that tonight?
Uh, we could approve the sign that is up, that is in compliance with the town code. And then with, with the understanding that he's going to apply for a variance to the ZBA for a larger sign.
Perfect.
Okay. So I'll put in that, uh, um, Jeremy, you could, uh, we'll get the proper reference for that option.
Sorry.
You, you, well, we're going to approve it subject to the option that you don't have the variance yet.
Sure. Okay. And just as a point of clarification, if I, if, sorry.
If it's being proposed at least at this point.
Sure. It, uh, uh, thank you. And if, uh, if, so if I go before the zoning board, uh, at the June meeting and they approve it, um, would, would your approval, should you approve this tonight, uh, uh, cover that as well?
Well, I thi- I think that it would take two meetings on the zoning board because there would be a public comment period. So it would be July before it got.
Yes, July approval.
Yeah. So, you know, we would approve the compliant sign for you so that you could, you know, get going. And then what happens with the, um, zoning board, you'll know in, you know, two months' time.
Yes.
So David, yes, that, that's the option we'd like.
Okay. Well, with that summary, I will, uh, with, uh, your willingness, uh, Gabby and I will get that written up for, uh, in response to how you vote tonight.
Okay. And is, is there a motion on the table then to approve this site plan?
I'm Chris here. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
It's Andrew. I'll second.
Gabby, call the roll, please.
Ms. Hayner?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Nuring?
Yes. Jeremy, this is a, a, a great, you know, project. I applaud your risk-taking and entrepreneurial nature. And I wish you the, the, the best of luck. I drive by that. I live, you know, two miles away. So I'll be eager to see the progress. So good luck.
Thank, thank you all so much. Uh, really an honor to, to have your support, uh, in this. Um, and, uh, it'll be a, it'll be a great adventure and I, uh, am venturing to make it as successful, uh, for the community as possible. And I will certainly invite you all to the, uh, to the opening, whenever, whatever that is. So.
I hope you have enough parking.
Thank, thank you too for, uh, um, for, uh, uh, allowing me to present tonight despite my omission. So thank you all.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Jeffrey, I need those plans.
You're in the Dropbox, Warren. It's Dave.
No, I need the plans for the building.
Oh, for the building. Right. Yes.
If he wants to get going forward, I need those plans.
He submitted. It's in Stacy's Ben Warren.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, let's move on to Barnes and Noble. Um, this was before the board last month, I believe. It was a, a simple facade change in the old Olive Garden building in the, um, was it the King's Mall, um, area? Um, David, uh, you've prepared some, um, paperwork on this.
Yeah, I've got a draft resolution. Did a, you've got a review memo. This is very straightforward. I, pending board discussion on what, if they like the facade, I, uh, is proposed, but it's pretty straightforward. Um, there's a resolution. You want me to summarize?
Um, let's have a discussion for, with the board first, um, before we go through that. Um, I believe the pictures and so on are in the Dropbox. Yep. Thank you, Gabby. Well, new Barnes and Noble signs. I haven't seen that before. There we go. That's what's being proposed.
Yep, they're changing the entry. It looks like they're changing, well, the doors, windows a little bit, and then the new signs.
A- any discussion from the board members?
Looks good.
Yeah, I think it looks good too.
All right, David, um, can you read the resolution then?
Sure. Uh, whereas the applicant being in Kingston, K K Barnes and Noble seeks approval to amend site plan for building facade changes to relocate to an existing commercial building. And whereas the material submitted in support of the proposed action include, uh, one, two, three, six items that, uh, make it a complete application, including a set of three large format photos showing the existing conditions and proposed views are prepared by, uh, Howell Bellinger Castelli Architects, um, and a set of ten sheets, uh, prepared by Rugal Sign, showing the location detail of the facade improvements and the signage, uh, designs. Uh, whereas the Ulster Planning Board retains authority to approve the site plan amendment according with, accordance with town code. Whereas the proposed action is exempt from referral to the county planning board pursuant to the referral agreement with the Town of Ulster. Whereas the Town of Ulster Planning Board upon review, the entire record determines the proposed action is type two and no further decision is required under Seeker now for therefore be resolved, the Town of Ulster Planning Board hereby grants conditional site plan approval for the proposed action. Subject to, one, compliance with applicable zoning and building laws, rules and regulations, compliance with all representations made by the applicant, compliance with site plan, design plans and all details cited herein, compliance with any comments from the Town of Ulster, uh, Water and Sewer Superintendents. Five towns consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor changes of ministerial nature, which may arise. And finally, six, all fees, including consultant fees shall be paid.
Okay. Is there a motion, um, from the board?
I'm Chris here. I'll make a motion to accept the.
I'll second that.
Gabby?
Ms. Hayner?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Nuring?
Yes. All right. The next item is NNS Supply. This is site plan amendment on one twenty Wood Road. We seem to like the Sawkill area tonight. So, um, I think they were, they were before the board last month and it's a very minimal change to an existing, uh, building. Gabby, can you pull up the material?
Let me just one second.
Mr. Chairman, while Gabby's pulling that information up, I just want to let you know that the owner of the property, um, Alan DeForest is on as well as, um, representatives from NNS Supply, if you have any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good to see you, Scott.
Good to see you, Frank.
I'm not Frank.
I can't see you, Warren. You're in the dark.
I'm in the dark. I'm out. I'm outside. You don't want my dogs involved in this conversation.
So we have.
What do you do if it rains there, Warren?
I get wet.
So we have the basic site plan, which isn't changing much, and then the floor plan, because they're going into a portion of an existing building.
I think that was on the, the, if you scroll up, Gabby, I think, yeah, there you go.
So in, in many respects, we're de-intensifying the use of the site because NNS Supply um, uses a very large portion of the, will use a very large portion of the property for inventory.
And the DeForest group will remain, Scott?
That is correct. Alan is on as well.
Okay.
Former chairman of the planning board.
What is the influx of, uh, traffic for supplies and delivery?
Uh, my name's Rob Nussbickel. I can answer that question. Um, the, the supplies and delivery are basically, um, a twenty-two foot truck that delivers from our main location, inventory, once a day. Um, trucks will pick up boilers and such on that side too. We have, we're going to have seven employees and we'll probably have about forty trucks coming in and out of contractors a day on a heavy day. On a light day, it'd be a lot less. They come in one at a time, two at a time. That type, that type of influx.
Being a former contractor, familiar with your current location. So I just, I was concerned about the delivery end of it.
You mean incoming supplies?
Yes.
Yeah, incoming supplies are, like I said, it's once a day. I'll occasionally get a drop shipment from a manufacturer, but mostly it's delivered from our main location, my, my central distribution. And that's one truck a day.
And in addition to being the architect for this project, um, the Nussbickels and, and I have been friends and neighbors for, since the year 2020. My office is directly adjacent to their current location in mid, midtown Kingston. This is a vast improvement for them, um, in terms of logistics, easy in and easy out. And, uh, Rob, do you want to talk briefly about, um, the, your, your model of supplying your contractors?
Well, our motto, um, well, has changed a little bit for, from, uh, from someone coming in and, and ordering everything on the, on the counter and having someone go pick it all out. Uh, now it's curbside pickup, dock pickup. Uh, so mostly people are, are literally in and at our store within minutes. Uh, that's the model we've gone to. We're all on one floor. So you, if, if you don't have your complete list, you can walk into the store. It's self-service mostly. We have a counter for, for help if you need it. Uh, but for the most part, it's a self-service type store with, with counter service as well, if, if necessary.
Are, are you moving, are you moving from the midtown location to this location?
We are, yes.
Okay.
Midtown location just doesn't make sense. It's thirty-eight thousand square feet on four floors.
Yep.
Uh, if you need something on the fourth floor, I have an employee up there for ten or fifteen minutes, getting that item and coming down. The, the, the service is going to be incredible at, at this new store, being on one floor and having almost everything out where you can pick it out yourself.
And for contractors, I mean, the, the ease of access to come off of, um, off of two oh nine or Sawkill to get their products and get back to the job site, um, I think will, uh, will be profoundly impactful to NNS's business. So.
Not, not to be a naysayer. I've been, I've been dealing with this location since it was Canfield, uh, for the past thirty years. And I'm just curious about your inventory and the fact that you did have four floors. So the inventory was much greater. I understand that the response to being able to supply within a day has been greatly increased due to your fiscal location. So if, if we're going to have a reduced traffic on that road, because I'm already having issues with other locations, then I don't have a problem.
Well, our, our inventory, I'll answer that question, um, is, is a day and a day. I, I don't have like, say, like forty gallon electric water heaters. I, I don't have eight or ten of them. I have two. Um, same thing goes through the entire rest of the store. I, I have a day or, a day or maybe two days' supply of, of everything in, in this store. This is, this is a model store. We have one just like it in, um, in Danbury, Connecticut. And we also have one just like it in, um, in Hudson, New York. in Hudson, New York, a little bit smaller, only by 1,000 square feet. But we've kind of perfected how we get people in and out and how you have what they need when they need it.
So Rob, this is essentially a satellite location to your main fish kill facility.
Absolutely. Our main fish bill store delivers throughout the entire Hudson Valley with 17 trucks, big trucks. We might not even have a pickup truck here to deliver out of here. They they handle everything, all the all the major lines, everything they and they feed us as a satellite.
Yep. Yeah, this makes sense. I got it. All right. Thank you.
Don't get me wrong. I don't think this is a bad idea. I just have to cover all the bases.
Understood.
Are you still serving the general public or is it just going to be contractors now?
Well, we are serving the general public. I think we don't have our showroom on here. We're gonna have some showroom space.
Correct.
Showroom spaces. Scott, do you have a rendition of where that might be on another?
I do, but I can describe it.
Yeah.
Space backs up to the DeForest Group space. So there what everyone knows is the second floor kitchen and bath area will exist in this location.
Mr. Chairman, Alan DeForest, I could address the traffic issue. We had, we still do have thankfully 30 employees. Up until six months ago, they were all working on location. We have gone to a modified work at home model where only five, at the most, six people will be at the office at any given time. So that's a much reduced traffic flow from our standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the traffic flow I'll hear about is not the employees driving personal vehicles would be the trucks that are coming down the road. Understand my point?
Understood.
Yeah, and Warren, I can tell you from personal experience that when when Rob and Wayne and Charlie and I all purchased these properties midtown 20 years ago, there was a high volume of 18 wheel traffic. But over the last seven or eight years, it's very rare where there's 18 wheel traffic. As Rob said, they've really refined their model and they're they're more precision in their response to customer requests. So.
And in the I'll get back to the dock pickup because literally we have the dock that is available there. We put the materials out on the dock. They don't even they don't even come they're trusted customers. So they don't even come inside the store at all. They'll back up to the dock, grab their items and they're leaving. So it's it's really, really quick.
I know I still purchase from you. So that's not the point. The 18 wheelers was a point. And that would be a concern for neighbors only because of other projects on that street. So the fact that you're going to reduce the the amount of commercial influx traffic is is plus. So the more we can keep minimum, better off we are.
Absolutely.
And Alan is swapping out a wholesale tenant that's currently there on site that does have 18 wheel truck traffic. So on balance, it's equal or less impact to the site for sure.
I know who his tenant is.
Any any other discussion or comment from the board?
None here.
I have none. Larry.
Okay, David, we prepared a resolution for this one.
Right.
Do you want to read the summary then?
Sure. Why is the applicant NNS Supply seeks approval to amend site plan for reuse of vacant portions of an existing commercial building for retail showroom and warehouse uses. And whereas the material submitted in support of the proposed action include several items that are the complete application, including including site plans consisting of two sheets prepared by Dutton Architect dated 4/28/21, consisting of sheet 11 of L 101 existing site plan and sheet A 102 proposed site plan and proposed fourth floor plan. There is a signed owner consent form, signed escrow account and the seeker environmental short form and a written narrative narrative of the project provided on one page. Whereas the town of Ulster Planning Board retains the authority to approve site plan amendment in accordance with town code. Whereas the proposed action is exempt from referral to the Ulster County Planning Board pursuant to their referral agreement with the town of Ulster. Whereas the town of Ulster Planning Board upon review, the entire record determines the proposed action is a type two action and no no further decision is are required under seeker now therefore be resolved. The town of Ulster Planning Board grants conditional site plan approve plan amendment approval for the proposed action subject to compliance with one, compliance with applicable zoning, building laws, rules and regulations. Two, compliance with all representations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plan, plans and all details is cited herein. Four, compliance with any comments from the town of Ulster Highway and Water Superintendent's. Five towns planning consultant and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor site plan changes of ministerial nature which may arise. And six, all fees, including consultant fees shall be paid.
Is there a motion on the table from the board?
I make that motion. Never mind. Larry did. He beat me. I'll second it, Larry.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hader?
Yes.
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Nering?
Yes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you all for your time and service tonight.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you again, even though it's under.
Looks great, Alan.
Yes, Alan, when I started on the board, you were my chairman. So hello.
Hey, guys, I'm still waiting for my retirement dinner, by the way.
Larry, Frank?
Good to see you guys.
All right.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, then we have two discussion items. One is the digital sign law. Last month, we reintroduced the topic of the digital sign law. I believe everybody wanted a chance to read it. And Jason, I'm not sure if you've made any recommended changes based on what maybe the zoning board had had to say because I know they were reviewing it as well.
They are reviewing it as well. There's no suggested changes right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has on the on the proposal.
So I'm I'm happy with it, obviously, but I think the supervisor just wanted concurrence from the board that we were all in agreement on it as opposed to a a resolution. I'm not sure what the technical.
The town code just states that any changes in zoning laws should be referred to the planning board for their for their input. It's not required to give input. It's totally up to the board.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, he put a lot of work into it. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm with you. I spend a lot of time with that and it pretty much covers everything I'm interested in.
Looks good.
All right, Jason, you can go back to the zoning board and there's we're in support, the planning board is in support of of it.
Thank you. I will let them know.
Okay. And the last item is returning to in-person meetings. I would not want to make this decision on my own as it affects everybody else. I'd like to just gauge people's where they sit with returning to in-person meetings. I spoke with the office today. It looks like the courtroom will handle about 20 people in the gallery that does not include us with the current seating. Jason, I believe that that's under the auspices of the court when we would still be required to mask, but I don't know the details on on that.
Well, there's a policy going out probably either Thursday or right after the town board meeting that the members of the public may enter town hall without a mask if they have been vaccinated. Obviously, this is on the honor system. I believe there will be directions from the state as to requiring meetings to be in person at some point. We're not there yet, but it's a very fluid situation that could come down next week, for example. I I think it's really up to the board. If people are happy with the current virtual meetings, we can continue until there's some direction from the state that we need to go back to in person. But if everyone's ready to go back for next meeting for for June, it's up to you.
So my feeling on it is that this needs to be a unanimous decision. If there's one person that doesn't want to, then we won't do it and and, you know, no harm, no foul, no judgment on anybody who does not want to return in public to in-person meetings. But I want to just throw it out there.
Jason, I have a question. The honor system, does that apply to us or can we request the fact that they show they were vaccinated?
We cannot request that they show they're vaccinated.
No, that's definitely a hit, but we're dealing with that at the school right now. Yeah.
We we cannot ask. It is 100% on the honor system. If you want to wear a mask in person, that is your prerogative. That's your right. But someone comes to the town hall and says, I I've been vaccinated. I'm not wearing a mask.
I would submit, Jason, that we've always been able to wear a mask in public at any point in time during your lifetime or mine.
Sure. And we all wear many masks. Some of them are visible, some of them are not.
Okay, all right, I get that one.
So that's that's the policy coming out from the town in the next day or two. I really believe it's it's it should be a consensus of this board as to what you want to do. And I'll tell the zoning board tomorrow night, same thing. It's up to all five of you and David and Gabby, how you want to proceed.
I mean, I don't mind. Again, yeah, you know, if we were to get guidance from the state, I'm okay with that. If we have to go back again, I'm okay with that, too. I do want to spread out a little bit because we we were tight. We were packed in pretty tight back a year ago. So now we might want to spread out a little more, but I'm gonna still wear my mask. I've been vaccinated, but I think waiting a little bit makes some sense to me, but I'll gladly go back next month if you guys are in agreement.
And I have no problem, Larry. I agree with Andrew. Why is before his time?
I'm the person you're not gonna want to see. Okay, I've been out since last March.
We forgot about Warren.
You're gonna want.
Well, Warren, you can say virtual.
You're gonna want me to be, yeah, oh, first of all, on the other end of the room.
Frank, you had you had a comment?
Yeah, I well, two comments. First, the times we did meet in the rec center were a whole lot easier to hold a meeting there than rearranging town hall. The courtroom.
And I actually asked that question and they have 48 chairs there that could be configured any way we wanted to. And that is an option. I'm just not sure of specific dates, but it's something that we certainly could look into.
And I'm I'm of the opinion that this thing is 99.9% over. And if someone wants to wear a mask for their own protection, I'm in favor of that, but I'm I'm all for open meetings and getting back to the normal situation. So if they want to come to a meeting with a mask on, fine. But I'm I'm willing to run around without a mask as I have for quite a while now in in the open.
Frank, you're not supposed to tell the building inspector that.
No, I do have a conversation with your father and he he still wears his mask outdoors.
Yeah, see, my father follows the rules because guess where his son lives?
John Moore, what are your thoughts? You're on mute there, John.
There we go. There we go. All right. You can hear me now, right?
Yes, sir.
I like Frank's suggestion about moving over to the bot building instead of the courtroom. And I'm all for getting back to normal as fast as possible.
Okay. John Stow?
I either way is fine with me. Either, let me put this. I'm in agreement with either way. Moving back to normal sounds good. I think it's time.
David?
We all start to think that way.
I'm the same with John. They'll give me excuse to get on my pajamas, too, right?
What, you got your pajama bottoms on there, David?
If I wear them, will they wreck me?
Gabby?
Um, I think I mentioned it before either way that, I mean, I usually go by what the state says and what they do, but if all of you were comfortable, I follow the leaders.
And Jason?
I'm fine either way.
All right, I I don't hear any strong opinions saying that we should remain virtual. Is that is my understanding of the conversation correct?
Yeah, I'm fine as long as I have my own. I'll be wearing a mask. I have my anxiety. So but at the same time, I do want to get back to normal.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And look, I I would not want anybody to feel pressured to do what everybody else does. If if somebody does not want to, then we won't. I don't have a problem.
I don't want to say that I don't want to. I do want to, but I just need my own little spot. That's all.
Okay.
Question, do any of the applicants, will they have any issues coming in? Do you think there'll be a could that be a concern that applicants may not want?
I mean, that would be a concern also the amount of space depending on the how many people we have. I mean, a couple different things could come up. So I guess, I mean, we could play it month by month and how many applicants we have. Or if they're comfortable and we can play it by ear. I mean, I don't know how you guys.
That was gonna be my question. That was gonna be my question. Tonight, we had 32 people join the meeting. Do we have room for 32 people in?
My question's gonna be, are we doing the six foot social distancing, which means I have to set up the entire room?
I thought it was three foot.
Yes, schools are three foot now, I believe.
Yeah.
So I need to know because I got to set the room up before you all arrive.
Let me do this because I think I I think step one is is are we ready to go back? And what I've heard is that, yes, we're ready to go back. I think the step two is can we find a location that suits the number of people and the configuration of what we want to do, whether it's the courtroom or the senior center and its availability. I think that question needs to be answered. And I think that's maybe my job to go back and talk with the town clerk and work with Gabby to find answers to that. So I I think I'd like to table this, get some more information. I'll send an I'd like to table this, get some more information, I'll send an email out and. You know, we have a short time before the June meeting, maybe it makes sense to continue the June meeting virtually while we figure this out. Um, but let me, let me do some investigation this week and I'll, I'll send an email out, is that fair?
Sounds good.
That sounds good.
There are, there are a lot of moving parts to this.
And I think with the recent announcement from the CDC and Cuomo and, you know, to your point Jason, this is, you know, moving at a rapid rate, let's um. Let, let's figure this out, um. We have three weeks before the next me- meeting. Gabby, three weeks?
Uh, give or take, I'd have to look, but three to four, yeah.
Yeah, so, so. Let's give this no more than two weeks to make a decision, so let me, let me commit to you guys that, um, I'll do the due diligence in the next two weeks. And get an email out, that'll give a week to plan and prepare and, and notifications that Gabby needs for the public. The town website and so on, so within the next two weeks, I'll, I'll get an email out, all right?
That's good.
Sounds good.
All right.
Let's get back to normal.
Any, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I made that motion.
Oh, don't rush, don't rush at that one.
All, all in favor? All right, all right, thank you, thanks guys.
Good night everyone.
Good night.
Bye.